Dear friends, dear colleagues. It was a profound shock and the deepest grief we received the sad news on 22 February that our esteemed colleague and dear friend Professor Benno Enduru, while he manure at a professorial chair in development at the University of Daisalam and chair for the Board of UNIWAIDA, had passed at the age of seventy-one. Benno embodied all of the human professional qualities which intellectual and policy leaders should aspire to achieve: inspiring, sacrificing, extremely effective and influential, and yet modest and forthcoming, always with a warm and broad smile that immediately made everyone comfortable, be the head of state, a colleague, or a student seeking his wise counsel. This is why the Developing Conference Special Session would commemorate and celebrate the life of work of Benno, this unusual person who always had so much to offer wherever he found himself, and throughout deeply concerned about the young, the next generation, who will shape the future of Africa and the world. This panel will recall his many contributions as an international leader in academic research for African and global development; his key role in bringing top-quality policy research and practice together; and his outstanding performance as an institution builder and executive director of the AERCC. And finally, the panel will pay homage to him as a treasured mentor, deliberating on his legacy in the Tanzania Economic Society. Our panel include, in the order in which they will speak: Stephen O’Connell. Steve is professor of economics at Swarthmore College and was chief economist of USAID in 2014-15. He’s published widely on macroeconomic policy and growth in Sub-Saharan Africa and was co-editor with Benno of the AERCC’s two-volume study “The Political Economy of Economic Growth in Africa, 1960 to 2000”. Enyuguna Ndongu. Enyuguna is the executive director of the AERCC, following in the footsteps of Benno. Enyuguna is also the immediate governor of the Central Bank of Kenya with numerous collaborative relations with his close colleague Inda Benno Enduru, who completed ten years of service as central bank governor of the Bank of Tanzania. Ernest N'Arity. Ernest is secretary-general of the African Research Universities Alliance of Ruhr, a network of sixteen of Africa’s flagship universities, and he is former vice-chancellor of the University of Ghana. He is chair of the Board of the AERCC and was previously chair of the Board of UNIWAIDA, a position Benno assumed in 2019. And to conclude, Blandina Kilimah. Blandina is outstanding among the numerous researchers Benno mentored, and she now works as an economic advisor to the president of the United Republic of Tanzania. She was the CEO of the Economic Society of Tanzania, of which Benno was the president until his passing. After these four presentations, I will make a few closing remarks, and I’ll invite you to observe a minute of silence before moving to a separate room, where participants will have the opportunity to recall and share with the rest of us memorable moments with Benno. Thank you, and Steve, you now have the floor.
I’m Steve O’Connell. It’s a privilege to share some thoughts about Benno as a scholar who served as a bridge between the worlds of research and policy and devoted his life to building that bridge throughout the continent. Benno was in secondary school at the time of the Arusha Declaration on Socialism and Self-Reliance in Tanzania in 1967. He entered the University of Daresalam in 1971. In rural Tanzania, President Nyerere’s program to resettle smallholders into Ujama villages for collective farming was entering an intense phase. Benno published his first research paper in 1973 as an undergraduate. Nearly thirty years later, Professor Issa Shivji, with the grudging admiration of a fiery Marxist, cites this paper as a highlight of the exhilarating campus debates of the time and an exemplar of the Maoist concept of no evidence, no right to speak. Benno’s paper was based on primary research among farmers in the Ru Fijji River Basin, south of Daresalam. In 1968, severe flooding had displaced smallholders from the basin, and President Nyerere had taken the opportunity to resettle them into Ujama villages on higher ground. But by the early 1970s, farmers were moving back. Why? Benno and his co-authors showed that the typical farmer’s labor was more productive under the vulnerable conditions of the floodplain than on the lower-quality land operated collectively by the Ujama villages. In what ultimately proved a pervasive policy failure, the pressure of subsistence was driving smallholders back. Benno’s 1979 PhD dissertation at Northwestern is entitled “The Role of Transportation in Agricultural Production: The Case of Tanzania”. He begins the dissertation with quotations from the British chief railway engineer in Tanganyika in 1945 and from Tanzania’s first post-Arusha five-year plan in 1969. Only then do we hear Benno’s voice, and I quote: “I found it proper to start with these two strong policy quotations under two very different regimes, to show the continuous emphasis transportation policy has received in economic development in general and agricultural development in particular in Tanzania.” There’s a subtle gambit here that defined Benno as a researcher. He would de-politicize debate by asserting common ground, economic development in Tanzania, in order to focus participants from all quarters on the question of how to get there. The best evidence would carry the day. That was the bridge he was building. The dissertation is a model of clarity and creativity. He uses the German army’s destruction of railways during World War I as what we now call a natural experiment to show that changes in transport costs affect the commercialization of agriculture and the allocation of farm labor between cash and food crops. The supply response to farm gate prices is crucial in his theory, and he finds large and significant responses using regional data on cotton and rice. He then addresses the government’s policy of paying the same crop prices to farmers in all parts of the country. To President Nyerere, pan-territorial pricing was a fundamental expression of solidarity and egalitarianism. To Benno, it was one potential way, among others, of getting to the goals of the Arusha Declaration. Benno makes it clear that by paying uniform prices, the government was subsidizing long and difficult transport routes over short and easy ones. He estimates the large efficiency distortion and also the fiscal burden. Equity goals might justify these costs, but the country’s most prosperous subsistence farmers were far from Daresalam. As an instrument for equity, therefore, the policy was backwards. It was imposing an implicit tax on the poorest farmers who lived closest to Daresalam. Here’s the final sentence of that dissertation: “I sincerely feel that interregional transport subsidy policy should be examined with closer scrutiny, so that the nation knows what costs are incurred in implementing it and whether it is effective in achieving the social objective of egalitarianism.” Benno never lost that commitment to scrutiny or that unique combination of courage and modesty. Of Benno’s nine books and nearly fifty articles, I’ll briefly focus on two characteristic pieces. In his 1986 article “Governance and Economic Management,” Benno starts with the insight that in many countries, the proliferation of black markets in response to government controls had undermined the effectiveness of those controls and “significantly altered the political calculus of economic adjustment.” There was therefore a political window of opportunity for economic reforms. But as always, Benno was playing the long game. It was unclear, he said, whether African governments would sustain the needed reforms once crisis conditions had improved. “Sustainable reform,” he wrote, “will hinge upon the strengthening of institutional structures capable of defending the resultant changes.” So in this 1986 paper, Benno anticipates a literature on institutions and growth that would not even take off until the 1990s, when big cross-country data sets became available. His emphasis was on the role of institutions in creating a favorable environment for private investment. He writes with deeply informed specificity about public sector management and urgent pragmatism on the need to reduce dependency on donor-driven agendas and advisors. His discussion of the importance of university research in Africa is a clear precursor of his role in establishing the AERCC. There is a nuanced understanding of the political economy of reform and a signal to donors that front-loaded aid flows could help governments navigate the short-run politics of reform by maintaining vital imports, infrastructure services, and social services. Two decades later, Benno had built the AERCC, contributed to the seniorage and debt literatures, served as research manager at the World Bank, and written his most cited paper with me, entitled “Governance and Growth in Sub-Saharan Africa.” He was at the World Bank, and we were wrapping up the AERCC project on the political economy of economic growth in Africa. That project focused on the drivers and consequences of intervention, crisis, and market-based reform. In his 2007 book “Challenges of African Development,” Benno asks a different question: What does the African developmental state look like? Benno had always insisted on an activist developmental role for governments, even when acknowledging the need to scale back and target more effectively. Now, with reforms largely consolidated, he draws on the global growth evidence to identify the four I’s of African development: investment, innovation, infrastructure, and institutions. In each domain, he strikes a balance between the roles of the state, the market, and non-state and external institutions, recognizing the unique capabilities and limitations of each and proposing a concrete vision consistent with inclusive development. In retrospect, these four pillars run like a thread through Benno’s scholarly writings. A balanced strategy is now central to how African governments and regional institutions conceive of development strategy, a reality that was of immense significance to Benno and for which he gave credit always to others. Benno was still playing the long game when he died, and in fact, our paper “Africa’s Development Debts” is forthcoming in the Journal of African Economies. As a research collaborator, Benno was all-in. He was astoundingly fast and responsive, and always subtly or not, a coach as well as a collaborator. One of my favorite emails is entitled: “Steve, I don’t think it’s time to panic.” Our central argument in that paper is that the preservation of development assets should be at the center of efforts to manage the debts accumulated during the 2000s. Benno’s voice comes through clearly. I’m grateful to Fin and to UNIWAIDA for this opportunity to remember Benno with you. We’ve lost a towering presence in our lives and for Africa. Benno built a bridge between research and policy in Africa. Keeping that bridge open and vital is an invitation to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Steve, for calling attention to Benno’s many contributions, as an intellectual academic leader in our field. This is much appreciated. We will now move on to the presentation by Enyuguna, the executive director of the AERCC. Enyuguna, you have the floor.
Let me start by thanking UNIWAIDA for organizing this session, and also for the chairman, Fin Ta, for coordinating these efforts in an effort to honor our foreign hero, Professor Benno Enduru. We at the AERCC are very grateful for this. I have a few slides that I’m going to share, and let me start by sharing them so that at least you can see the content of which we hold our hero, Benno Enduru. First, let me say that we are celebrating Professor Benno Enduru, who is an intellectual and a policy leader, and we are very happy at the AERCC for doing this. I’m going to bring a few tributes or a few issues, a few areas where Benno has contributed, not only in terms of intellectual input, but also as a policy advisor and a policy leader. First, let me start by where we are at the AERCC. AERCC is a capacity-building network that comprises of capacity-building through research and even graduate training, and we also have a policy outreach and communication. And this helps us in terms of trying to help capacity that according to institutions, mid-level career of government, and even policy leaders in the network in Sub-Saharan Africa. And this is the structure that Benno helped create way back in 1988. And this is the approach we use to date for capacity building and knowledge generation in Sub-Saharan Africa. Second, let me talk about Benno Enduru, the thought leader. He was the leading right at the University of Daresalam, and his publication spanned four decades. Some of the trails of revolutionary contributions involve, for example, a Jeddah for Africa Economic Renewal in the 1990s that set the stage for richer and comprehensive reforms in African economies. Second, growth and adjustment in Sub-Saharan Africa, and this is also the time when AERCC was established just to deal with the issues of structural adjustment. And here, Benno actually outranked economic reforms in Sub-Saharan Africa that is required, and this is by 1990. The third area, which is very important for us, is economic directions, new directions in development economics, which was published in 1996. And that gave even us, young economists, the direction that we need to take when we’re looking at development economics. Fourth, governance and growth in Sub-Saharan Africa. And these are issues that we have, that has preoccupied our researchers for many years. And finally, and not the least, there are so many of them, if we wanted to parade them, is the political economy of economic growth in Africa. And this was published in 2000, and this was really a leading light in terms of what African economic growth is all about and the difference between different countries in Africa: the coastal-rich countries, coastal resource-rich countries, raw dropped resources, poor countries, and all that. And this has helped shift the policy narrative in Africa because it’s actually not one narrative, but diverse narrative depending on country characteristics. And for us, this is a lesson that we have learned for many years. The second thing is, I wanted to show that Benno Enduru is a leader in terms of innovation and capacity building. And he was the first director of AERCC Research, and he is the one who actually developed the Building Blocks of Capacity Building. Second, he was also the first African executive director of the AERCC in 1992. For us, we are happy to report and even to showcase that he has provided pioneering development at the AERCC, and the collaborative research in the 1990s and the graduate training in 1993 is a good example. So this has supported the AERCC network and the secretariat with innovative ideas for capacity building and funding AERCC activities since then. From where he was sitting as governor of the Bank of Tanzania, he was coordinating the AERCC African Central Bank Governors, the Program Committee, and even he has made some contribution, tangible contribution, at the AERCC Board, even when he had led the AERCC. But the leading policy advisor in Benno is quite remarkable. The first AERCC Senior Policy Seminar in 1995 was supposed to reach out to policymakers and share research findings and a link to practical policy implementation. And since then, every March of the year, we have held Senior Policy Seminar in diverse topics. He had a long stint at the World Bank in Tanzania as a leading economist and in the Vice President and Chief Economist’s office in Washington DC of the World Bank. He was also economic advisor to the Prime Minister of Ethiopia. He has had an advisory role from governments to government agencies as well as moderator institutions. He was economic advisor to the president of the Republic of South Africa, but the history of his advisory role in the Republic of South Africa starts way back in the 1990s. And he is one of the most successful and celebrated governors of the Central Bank in this region, NBO. He served as the governor of Bank of Tanzania from 2008 to 2018, a ten-year period which has seen a remarkable development in central banking and monetary policy. Benno, the policy leader, is actually quite fascinating. Designing monetary policy in the Bank of Tanzania, that was very, very critical. He was a leading right in monetary policy reforms, regional integration in the East African community and even the Sandak region. He was a leading right in payments system, that is, the East African payment system, and the pioneering push for digital financial systems, starting with digital electronic payment system in East Africa. Tanzania also published the book on the Path to Prosperity, and he was one of the editors and even a contributor. And that for us is really a leading right in terms of Path to Prosperity. And finally, he was a commissioner by the time of his demise with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Digital Pathways for Prosperity Commission on Technology and Inclusive Development in Bravatnik School of Government in Oxford. But let me also come to a personal level. He was a friend to me and a mentor. He was a friend to me and a role model, and also a mentor. He was the only governor in the African region to accept and replicate Kenya’s M-Pesa in the Bank of Tanzania. And M-Pesa is an electronic payment platform, a digital electronic payment platform that was started in Kenya in 2007 and has been replicated across the East African region and now is reaching out to outside Africa. He was at my defense when IMF and the World Bank doubted Kenya’s M-Pesa, the digital electronic payments platform, and financial inclusion goal. The two countries are now the most successful, that is, Kenya and Tanzania are the most successful in digital financial services: financial inclusion and electronic payments infrastructure. We then combined forces to lead the way in reformulating monetary policy framework in East African countries with the support of IGC. He supported me as chair in the Formation of Alliances for Financial Inclusion, AFI, in 2009, a network of financial regulators that coordinated financial and still coordinates financial inclusion in our policies in Africa, Asia, and Latin America. Later became chair of AFI and pushed its expansion, and that is how it has stood even to date. It’s one of the most prolific networks on policy formulation. We have received tributes, but from so many, and this was in our previous biennial in June this year. And we asked several leading rights, and even those who were there in the Formation of AERCC and later, to provide tributes. We have so many, and it is actually in our website. But I just wanted to just show you a few. And I don’t want to read the tributes. These slides will be available. But I wanted to recognize Professor Anne Bigston, Professor Jerry Heraina, Dr. Barbara Burungi, Dr. Joyce Moog, Professor Shanta Deverajan, Professor E.B. Ajai, Professor Stephen O’Connell, Dr. Rohinton Merora, and finally, one of perhaps prolific policymakers in Africa, Dr. Kefara Yansane. The way forward is that we have to keep the memories of our hero alive. And we at the AERCC are asking ourselves, how do we do this? The first thing is that we are going to start with memorial lectures during the December biennial, starting with the December 2021 Biennial Conference. We’ll be having Benno’s memorial lectures. The second thing is that we’re going to organize, and we are still continuing to organize and arrange and develop a publication of a volume in Benno’s memory. And we are working towards that, especially Stephen O’Connell and Shanta Deverajan and ourselves in the AERCC, we are working very hard on that. And finally, we are going to establish corruptions in the name of Professor Benno Enduru. And this will be awarded to the best male and female candidates every year at the AERCC graduate training programs. And we do believe that these three areas and maybe others that we may think about in future will be very, very important in keeping the memories of our hero alive. And finally, we might be saying, “Pain free, rest in peace, our dear friend.” But from all of us at the AERCC, let me say in the East African way, “Asante sana.” But of course, we also cover a front-end region, let me say, “Mesibuku.” And from all of us at the AERCC, thank you very much, and let my friend rest in eternal peace. Thank you very much, and good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Enyuguna, for so aptly bringing out Benno’s role in the interface between research and policymaking, and also so eloquently referring to his personal qualities, which we will of course always keep in our hearts. Now we move on to Ernest. Ernest, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me begin my remarks by thanking UNIWAIDA for inviting to join this special session in honor of our dear friend and colleague, Benno Enduru. I first met Professor Benno Enduru in November 1988. This was at the first AERCC annual research workshop, which brought together more than forty young researchers from several different African countries to Nairobi. Because at this meeting, that we first learned of Benno’s strong engagement with the network. He was there as director of research. But it was obvious that the entire operation had been changed on his ability to organize things and bring people together. It was clear that his process as director of research was not simply in order to tick a box for AERCC, but largely based on his shown competence. In March of 1994, Jeff Fein, who was the executive director, left AERCC and Benno replaced him. It was obvious that a very wise decision had been made by the board in appointing Benno to replace Jeff. It didn’t take long before Benno began the process of expanding AERCC. He encouraged you from different countries to join the network. He encouraged researchers from several different places and institutions to submit proposals to the network for consideration. His interest was not simply in growing the number of researchers, but also in broadening this scope of work done by the network. It was quite anxious to make the work of AERCC relevant to the needs of the African nations. The network was after all meant to serve those nations and their need for evidence to support policymaking. So Benno began a process of transformation very early, and in doing this, brought in researchers and resource persons from different backgrounds and different nations who had a lot of promise in terms of what they could do for African economic research. Benno was very interested in diversification, diversification not only of the themes, but also the source of funding for the network. He showed a lot of interest in moving beyond the original funders of AERCC, finding new funders from other parts of Europe, and also looking beyond Europe to other places in North America and also Asia. That’s how the funding base of AERCC was expanded considerably in the 1990s. But beyond that... But beyond that, Benno was very, very interested in getting African governments and African institutions to be active in organizing A R C. He sought assistance from the African Development Bank, founded. He sought encouragement, collaboration with the UN Economic Commission for Africa and also the African Union. Several African governments were approached and some provided support in different ways. I'm very happy that Benno's initiatives paid off in several ways, not only in the resources committed to A R C, but also in the very rich resources, this, the people. Ben had given diversity. He wanted to see more women participate in the work of A R C. He toured the length and breadth of Africa, looking for women in various economics departments, finance ministries and treasuries, central banks, to support the work of A R C, to engage with A R C. To some extent, he saw success there. Benno wanted more Franco-Fore participation. This also saw Franco-Fore as a guest coming from very unlikely places. In the end, A R C became a much more diversified unit, very strong, very capable. Benno believed strongly that the work done by A R C researchers should reflect the needs and the requirements of their countries. The senior policy seminar was introduced as a way of encouraging governments to be interested in the work being done by the other shows. But the senior policy seminar was a means to bring research to the doorstep of governments. It was also a means of helping governments to know who the active researchers were. Beyond the senior policy seminar, there were also national policy seminars supported by A R C, all very much the ideas coming from Benno. It was obvious that Benno had transformed A R C when I was leaving. It was obvious that Benno's contribution to the growth and transformation of A R C could not be taken lightly. What impressed many of us was Benno's private or personal lifestyle and how he used that to encourage people. Benno was a very friendly person. He engaged with each of us as friends, even though we've been brought together to work. We became friends, I think, yes, with me, of almost everybody. Benno was a friend. Through this, he mentored young people. Through this, he counseled very young people. Everybody came to like and appreciate what he stood for. Everybody respected his integrity and everybody respected his intellect. Benno was a very strong pillar for African economic research. Today, we gather here to mourn him, to show our respect for him. Benno did everything possible to help improve the quality of economic research in Africa. It's my hope that in death, he will continue to influence us, that his legacy will be one that will guide young researchers in Africa, that his integrity, his reputation, will strengthen many young researchers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ernest, for these warm words, recalling the importance of Benno as an institution builder and executive director of the A R C. I appreciate your contribution very, very much. And now we will pass the floor to Blandina. Blandina, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. It was really nice to hear from Steve and you. Um, as you would see, all of them have been introduced as professors and most of the friends that I got to meet through Benno were professors. But when you were with him, you were never intimidated by a lot of the good things that you had today. And so today, um, when Finn, you reached out to me a couple of months ago, um, there are four things I want to talk about Professor Ben Ondulu. Um, he was the father, that's something that I always say. But whenever he would introduce me to his students, then suddenly he was like, like my grandfather when it comes to the research world. The second bit, I worked with Benno after he left the Bank of Tanzania, after he was the governor. So I knew him more as the president of the Economic Society of Tanzania. That's the second bits I would like to talk about. And then the third bit, and I think all the other presenters also touched on it, is his drive for a learning and particular towards the end, a lot around technology, that will be the third thing. And the fourth thing that I would like to touch on is, um, he's, um, uh, he's really a drive to make sure that he's building, um, capacity of young researchers from all diversified groups. I think those are the things that I would like to talk about. So the first bit, when I called him a grandfather, but let's say a father at the same time, the one thing that strikes you so much is the way he would introduce you to anybody at any time when you ask for something. Um, and with that, then I found myself a lot of times when you're with Professor Ben Ondulu, inasmuch as he was a giant, you will feel like, you know what? I am okay. I belong here. Let me pull, pull up my socks and, you know, fit into this world. In such a way, when you read his work, you would feel it too, that he had the lead figure and I think, um, I agree with all the others. He was just not, uh, famous and carrying it with him. But I think the biggest part with him was he was giving away his power to everybody who was around him. And with that, I think that's why he became so helpful. And I think that's the biggest lesson for all of us, um, who have learned from, from him. And I would say like what Ernest and Juguna has said, when we're thinking about the legacy that he is leaving behind, in particular for us, um, is how you can really be humble, but really touch it as many people as you can. That's the first part. The second bit's, um, him as the president of the Economic Society of Tanzania. Um, I've learned so many things from him. So today we, we hear a lot about his academic credentials. We hear a lot about his policymaking skills. But for me, he was, A, he connects not only the academics and the research bits, but how he was also really strong when it comes to administering um, and moving, uh, different issues that we had. So at the Economic Society, inasmuch as we were organizing, uh, these seminars and platforms for different, um, 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 audiences, he will always say, Blandina, let's finish this meeting before it starts. He will always, always have time, no matter what. He will just have time. It's like, okay, if this meeting, let's say like today, is on, um, on the sixth, let's meet on the fourth and make sure we have ticked everything that is required. And if there are things that need to be revised, he will advise accordingly. And I think, um, that is a very rare thing. He was selfless, uh, to his time, given like what you've heard others say and we keep on hearing, how, um, um, established he was, but still he gave his time. And I think that is a lesson we can all, um, uh, pick. Um, and when it comes again to the same bits around, um, him being the president, he had this network, um, um, that he was just on his fingertips. I remember Finn yourself, um, we asked you to help us organize one of our conferences. And already he knew if you're talking about industrialization, you have these people in Vietnam, we can link with Finn, we can link with all these other speakers, we can link with Sound and everybody. He was just that quick to get, um, people together to discuss an issue that he believes, um, people need to understand better. And one joke that I always used to laugh, uh, when he would say, he would say, it's important that people run away from the brown dots. Perhaps this is more typical in Tanzania than elsewhere in the world. But he was like, people need to read access to information in different packages and not one, uh, one kind alone. Uh, the third bit, which was also a bit of a surprise, given, uh, who he was. Um, I spoke about him loving to learn and loving to do new things. Is he is really, um, drive towards the use of technology and making sure, um, reaching as many people as much as possible. And for him, and I think as Professor Juguna touched on, um, um, issues around financial inclusion, those are very important to him and were very dear and you would hear him, um, a lot of platforms talking about how he believes we need to reach to the, to the, to the, to the, uh, the people who are really, uh, far away and how they can have access and then able to produce productively. And he would move very quickly from a very macro discussion and take you very quickly to a mess. And suddenly you're in a micro discussion just to, uh, make you understand what he is really referring to. And for him, technology was the way and was the, um, was the way not only to reach more, but he believes the disruption that the technology would bring will actually help, uh, to enhance, uh, lives of so many people. And the last, and I think all the other speakers touched on, is, um, his beliefs in capacity building. And when he speaks of capacity building, he means everything from like, um, the methodological, uh, kind of like trainings to like high level kind of like discussions. But then importantly, even having people, um, uh, set aside for several days just to make sure they understand an issue better, he was really good at that. And I, I found that was very interesting. As I said, that the, given his name and what he has accomplished, you always see, you would always think it would be very difficult uh, for him to give you your time. But if you would bring something that is really dear to him, he will be ready and he will be available to speak to all different kind of the audiences, not just economists. And, and I heard a lot about economists here. But for instance, um, uh, while I was at Repoa, we had this course where we, when we were talking about harnessing natural resources for development. He came in and he was willing, uh, to talk to the group of young people who were really interested to understand how actually are natural resources important in creating development, um, um, in the, in the country. And he again opened up himself so much in such a way, we were like, okay, yes, Professor Ben Ondulu, we knew about this. But then it was important to, to, to hear him really encourage other people from other fields to understand better economics. And the last bit, as I said, um, with him, uh, we were together as he was the president of the Economic Society of Tanzania. The last time, um, and it's sad that this was the last time that we were with him. Um, it was during something we call sneakers and heels. And this was, uh, um, uh, um, a mentoring program for mid-career women. And he was around looking at women who are in the transport sector. And he was like, Blandina, you're bringing me full circle. And I think I will come and speak to the women and tell them some of the opportunities that are, are there. And he was fantastic. And he was saying, just because the sector is male dominated, technology is really disrupting all this. And there are lots of opportunities that we can actually, um, undertake and get more women involved, more diversified groups, uh, involved more productively. Um, of course, uh, we can't speak about Finn in ten minutes, but I thought I would share, um, those few. Finn, thank you so much and all the others. Thanks.
Blandina, thanks so much for paying tribute to Benno's many qualities when it comes to mentoring and you were spot on. May, may I, on behalf of both myself, as well as everybody who have been listening to Steve and Yuguna, Ernest and Blandina, express sincere gratitude for capturing so aptly Benno's many contributions and his enduring professional and personal importance to all of us. With your permission, we will share your contributions with Benno's family as a statement of how much we appreciate their sharing. His valuable time and profound inspiration with us. I'm sure you will understand that it was with both commitment and gratitude to Benno's memory that this session was put together. To be sure, Benno will continue to live with us in our minds and hearts as a great inspiration. He always was and is. May Benno's soul rest in eternal peace. And may I invite you all to observe a minute of silence in honor of Professor Benno Ondulu, leading colleague, chair of the UNU wider board and dear, dear friend. Thank you very, very much. And may I now invite you to join us in the thematic coffee room continuation of the Benno Ondulu special session. I look forward to seeing you there where we can share memories of Benno.